Thank you so much, son. Good afternoon, everyone. The November 1st, 2021 meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It's 2:00 PM. I'm Loredana Gonzalez, President of the Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Morales.
Here.
Mosqueta. Peterson.
Here.
Sawant.
Present.
Strauss.
Present.
Herbold.
Here.
Juarez.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Council President Gonzalez.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you so much. I will make sure that the record reflects when Councilmember Mosqueta joins our meeting. We do expect that she will be with us. Presentations. Colleagues, I'm not aware of any presentations for today, so we will move to approval of the minutes. There are no minutes for approval today, so we will go ahead and move to approval of the introduction and referral calendar. We do have two introduction and referral calendars to approve today, so I will go through the first one, which is October 18th, and then the second one, which is November 1st. And also want to note for the record that we have been joined by Councilmember Mosqueta. Welcome.
Thank you, Council President.
Of course. Okay, October 18th. The formal roll call on the adoption of the introduction and referral calendar on October 18th, 2022, was overlooked at our last meeting, so to close the final action on the October 18th introduction and referral calendar, we will formally adopt it today. If there's no objection, the October 18th introduction and referral calendar will be adopted, and any actions consistent with the introduction and referral calendar will be ratified and confirmed. Hearing no objection, the October 18th introduction and referral calendar is adopted, and the actions consistent with the introduction and referral calendar are ratified and confirmed. Now, if there is no objection, the November 1st, 2021 introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the November 1st introduction and referral calendar is adopted. If there's no objection, the agenda for today will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is now adopted. Colleagues, at this time, we will open the remote public comment period for items on the City Council Agenda, Introduction Referral Calendar, and the Council's Work Program. I want to thank everyone for their ongoing patience and cooperation as we continue to operate the remote public comment system. It remains the strong intent of the City Council to have remote public comment regularly included on meeting agendas. However, as a reminder, the City Council reserves the right to end or eliminate these public comment periods at any point if we deem that this system is being abused or is no longer suitable for allowing our meetings to be conducted efficiently and effectively. I'll moderate the public comment period in the following manner. Public comment period for this meeting was noted to be 20 minutes, with each speaker being given two minutes to address the City Council. We do have a little over 30 speakers signed up to give public comment today, so I would like to extend the public comment period to a total of 30 minutes, with each speaker having one minute to address the City Council. So if there's no objection, the public comment period will be extended to 30 minutes. Hearing no objection, the public comment period is extended to 30 minutes. Again, each speaker will have only one minute to address the City Council. This will hopefully allow us to get through a vast majority of those who have pre-registered for public comment this morning, this afternoon, excuse me. Speakers will be called on in the order in which you registered to provide public comment on the Council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number used for this registration and using the meeting phone number ID and Pasco that was emailed to you upon confirmation. This is different than the general meeting listen line call-in information. Again, I'll call on each speaker by name and in the order in which you registered on the Council's website. If you've not yet registered to speak but would like to, you can sign up before the end of public comment by going to Council's website at seattle.gov. Public comment link is also listed on today's agenda. Again, just as a reminder, we will only be doing public comment for 30 minutes today. If we do not get to you, or if you still would like the Council to consider your public comments, you can always email your public comments directly to the full council@council, that's C-O-U-N-C-I-L, at seattle.gov. Once I call your name, staff.
Council President Gonzalez, can I request, since there are only, since there are, I mean, assuming that there are only a few more, as you said, than 30 signed up, I would request that we take all of them, because we don't have a long agenda today. We have only a few appointments to deal with, and I'm worried that tenants from Rainier Court will be cut from the public comment.
Councilmember Sawant, we have a lot of people registered and some people showing up not present. I suspect we're going to be able to get through everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, you can, once I call your name, staff will unmute the appropriate microphone, and an automatic prompt if you have been unmuted will be your cue that it is your turn to speak, and then the speaker must press star six before speaking. Again, I'm going to call your name, you're going to hear an automated prompt if you have been unmuted, and after you hear that automatic prompt, you should then press star, that's star six, to begin speaking. Please start by stating your name, the item you are addressing, and as a reminder, your public comment should relate to an item on today's agenda, the introduction work, the introduction referral calendar, or the Council's Work Program. Speakers will hear a chime when you have only 10 seconds left of your allotted time. Once you hear the chime, please begin to wrap up your public comment. If you do not end your comments at the end of the allotted time period, which in this case is one minute, then your microphone will be muted to allow us to call on the next speaker. Once you've completed your public comment, please disconnect from the line, and if you plan to continue following this meeting, you can do so on Seattle Channel or the listening options listed on the agenda. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up the period of public comment now. I'm going to start by listing the first three people on the list. Again, press star six after you hear the prompt of you have been unmuted. The first three speakers are Howard Dale, Elon Axelbank, and then Loris Gordon.
Good afternoon. Howard Dale, District 7, speaking on the budget and failed police accountability. So far in the budget process, the Council has not touched the nearly $30 million spent on the pretense of police accountability, maintaining all the current aspects of the police investigating police folk accountability system. Outrageously, this Council plans to actually increase the budget for the OIG for a public records disclosure person. This indicates a complete disconnect between the Council and the reality of what is happening now at the OIG. One of the many complaints that two high-level whistleblowers from the OIG have made is that the OIG Director Lisa Judge consistently hides the actions of her office by demanding that OIG staff not document in writing any concerns or disagreements with OPA investigations in an overt attempt to subvert our public records law. This is an abject failure of Council oversight. We must invest these monies in a system providing full civilian community control over police. Go to seattlestop.org to find out how. Seattlestop.org.
Thank you. Next up is Elon Axelbank, followed by Loris Gordon, and I'm showing Colin Moen as not present but registered, and then we will hear from Esther John. Go ahead, Elon.
Thanks. Yeah, my name's Elon Axelbank. I live in between Mount Baker and Columbia City. I live Columbia City. I live two blocks from the Rainier Court apartment, and I saw what was going on there in the news, and I heard about it from Councilmember Shama Sawant's office. And I went to a tenant's meeting there just two, three nights ago on Friday night and heard just absolutely insane stuff, code violations, $100 rent increases, a woman with sickle cell anemia, rent being raised $240, people who, you know, have spoken out are being intimidated by the property management and the maintenance, you know, hired by the property management there, et cetera. It's a dire situation, and the City Council needs to speak out. I think it's striking that Shama Sawant, even though she's not the District 2 City Councilor, got an email from the Executive Director of SEED asking for a meeting. This shows that organizing and pressure in our movement works. I would really strongly urge the other city councilors to sign onto Shama's letter. It'll be more powerful. It comes from a bunch of people, not individual councilors sending their own letters.
Thank you. Next up is Loris Gordon, followed by Colin Moen, and then Esther John.
Go ahead.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, go ahead.
My number is Loris Gordon. I live in a low-income work, working-class center, centers, and, you know, meetings, follows, you, yeah. Can I say when I want to?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm here for, for the rent, but also, we don't have nobody that works in here in these buildings, apartment 323A. And they don't, they don't have nobody in here, and they, if we try to call them, then they'll answer their phones and stuff like that. And it's just bad conditions in here, so I don't know why these people are still here anyway. They ain't doing the work.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Colin Moen, followed by Esther John, and then Diane Vickers. Colin.
Hey, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name's Colin Moen. I'm an apprentice electrician with IBW Local 46. So two Mondays ago, on October 18th, all the Democrats on the City Council shamefully attempted to silence workers like myself and Councilmember Sawant, who has brought forward the legislation to make contractor bosses fully pay for construction worker parking. Hundreds of workers pushed back, calling you out for what you did, which was basically to use bureaucratic rules against Councilmember Sawant to prevent her from even describing the legislation, which her office developed after consulting with rank-and-file union members like myself. Those of you councilmembers who tried to silence us have failed to say even one word in support of this legislation, even though most of you call yourselves labor-friendly progressives. What you did at the meeting on October 18th only helped the contractor bosses who exploit us and make us pay to have to go to work. Hundreds of community members, many of them construction workers, sent emails to the council members, calling them out on these delay tactics. Thanks to this bold action by workers, the City Council Democrats have been forced to partially concede and now have to consider Councilmember Sawant's parking ordinance. I urge politicians to not delay on this. There is no excuse for any further.
Next is Esther John, followed by Diane Vickers, and then Aleem Bissrot. Esther, welcome. I've not seen Esther on my screen, IT. Looking for, oh, looks like Esther John is no longer present. If she comes back, we will certainly call on Esther. So next up is Diane.
Oh, I'm, I'm muted now.
Go ahead.
I'm so sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Esther, my name is Esther Little Dove John, and Seattle City Council, the tenants were being threatened with $100 rent increases. I could have been one of them. I'm African-American, and where I live now, I'm afraid of even a 10% rent increase. I almost lived at Rainier Court, so now I must speak out against this rent increase. Please, Seattle City Council, stand with us against the rent increase and the management, mismanagement of pest control, and stand with us against allowing the residents to become uninhabitable. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. Next up is Diane Vickers, followed by Aleem Bissrot, and then Reverend Angela Ying. Diane, welcome.
Hi, thanks for taking time to listen to me. My name is Diane Vickers, and I'm the PTA President at Roddey Thompson Pre-K through 8 School in the northwestern corner of our city. Roddey Thompson is an excellent school and deserves to be highlighted in positive ways rather than the deluge of negative precedents received over the past year due to the presence of a homeless encampment in the field behind the school in Ditterlake Park. We are very grateful to hear that the city is finally working with the school district and numerous other organizations involved to find long-term housing and other services for the residents of the encampment. Thank you for that. Our understanding is that all current residents will be housed by the end of this month and that the area will be cleared finally. We hope that you will stick to this. However, the involvement by the city has taken far, far too long. Over the past year and a half, both the city and the school district have fielded calls and letters from concerned community members with responses that only pass the buck and blame each other. The land where the encampment sits does belong to SPS but operates under a joint-use agreement being maintained mainly by the Parks Department. I have a lot more to say here, but our students have been subjected to a lot of terrible stuff.
Thanks for calling in today. Next up is Aleem Bissrot, followed by the Reverend Angela Ying.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Aleem. My, hi, my name is Aleem Bissrot. I live in the Dakota apartment. I am calling on you to stand with me and my neighbors. I am low-income. I already paid $1,254, and starting next month, this month, it will be more than that, $1,300, and the conditions are terrible. Please stand with me and support our dominance and no rent increase. As fix the maintenance issues now, also support the New Hope.
Thank you for calling in, Aleem. The next speaker is Reverend Angela Ying, and then we have Krista Sandoval, Leibin Abdallah, and Jonas Semekki, who are all registered but showing as not present. Go ahead, Reverend.
Hello, I am the Reverend Angela Yang. How many thousands of working people have already been displaced, priced out, and made homeless? Now, our Rainier Court apartment neighbors, predominantly low-income seniors, are having their rents go up by hundreds of dollars each month. Did you hear what I said? Our low-income seniors, people who have worked their entire lives and now are purposefully being driven out. This is wrong. Now is also the time for you to make good on your promises to our Black community in Seattle Central District by funding our New Hope reparations, funding which you already passed and promised to our Black communities, so we can build affordable housing and provide vital, life-giving community programs, including Clean Greens. Yet there always seems to be funding to put our Black youth in jails. That's not what we need to end homelessness. You have talked about funds for New Hope reparations. Now, we need to have it done. Do it. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Jonas Semekki, followed by Varun Balour. Jonas, welcome. And Jonas, make sure you press star six, so we can hear you. There you go. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Jonas Semekki. I'm living in the Dakota Building, Dakota Apartments, and all the time the rent is increasing because we are low-income, we are senior and disabled in most of the city, and also we have a large problem in our building. No, we have had maintenance, a large maintenance problem, and no one has resolved most problems. And we, we need the City Council to follow, what's her name, Sawant, and publicly stand with us.
Thank you, Jonas, for calling in today. Next up is Varun Balour, followed by Ms. Gloria B. Go ahead, Varun. And you have to press star six, so we can hear you. There you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, hi, yeah. This morning during the briefing, Councilmember Sawant mentioned that she is drafting a resolution for the City Council to reject Mary Durkin's outrageous executive order reinstating hiring bonuses for police officers in an already bloated budget for the department. Like the Reverend Angela Yang just said, there's always money, it seems, for putting, putting Black youth, working-class youth in prison, but there isn't any, any money, apparently, for, for, for housing projects and for, and for the social services. The police are some of the most highest-paid city employees, making them, making more than double of what is paid to social workers, like homeless service workers. Where are the living wages, let alone hiring bonuses for social workers? I strongly support Councilmember Sawant's resolution rejecting hiring bonuses for police officers but retaining them for workers who respond to the 911 calls. It's stunning, and we need to point out how the socialist on the City Council has been the only elected representative who has consistently stood with the Black Lives Matter movement, while the so-called progressive Democrats have talked endlessly about BLM but then failed to defend the police. They cut at the banner.
Thanks for calling in. Next up is Ms. Gloria B., followed by Daniel Kavanaugh, and then Demetris Abu. Go ahead, Gloria. Please remember to press star six. Again, if you're listening, before you can give public comment, you have to hit star six. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ms. Gloria B. I live in the Rainier Court Apartments. We are low-income seniors and immigrant families. We are facing huge rent increases, and many of us are living in deplorable conditions and are still preparing to pay, center required to pay. Our rent on time, and if we're late, there is a late fee charge. We are coming together as renters and demanding for the first time that the rent increases since October 1st be rescinded and all maintenance issues be addressed. We need City Council members to follow, Councilmember Sawant's lead, and publicly stand with us, because she's great. My rent has gone up by $100, even though I've had a long list of maintenance since before the pandemic.
Thank you for calling in, Ms. Gloria. Next up is Daniel Kavanaugh, followed by Demetris Abu, and then Sonia Ponath.
Hi, my name is Dan. I'm a renter and worker in First Hill. I apologize for the background noise. I'm in the airport to go to a funeral, and I did not want to be calling in from the airport, but after what happened on October 18th, when, you know, the Democrats on the City Council silenced Councilmember Sawant and silenced construction workers in Seattle who are fighting for paid parking, I had to call in because it was just absolutely outrageous. You need to pass Councilmember Sawant's legislation for paid parking for all construction workers without delay. I don't want to hear any more excuses. Councilmember Herbold, in particular, sent long responses to community members' emails claiming that there are supposedly rules that mean that you, you know, don't have time during the budget season for other work, but you canceled last Monday's meeting just because you didn't have any work. So stop trying to avoid this issue just because you would rather, you know, let these million-dollar corporations get away with not paying their workers parking. Pass this legislation immediately.
Next is Demetris Abu, followed by Sonia Ponath, and then Cassandra Oaks. And again, remember to press star six, so you can unmute yourself. Star six. Demetris, we are unable to hear you. Can you try one more time? Star six. Okay. Looks like we're having some technology difficulties there, so let's go ahead and move over to Sonia Ponath, and then we will try Demetris one more time. Go ahead, Sonia.
Hi, this is Sonia Ponath. I want to urge the progressives on the Council to join Councilmember Sawant in standing with these tenants at Rainier Court. There's a letter she sent out to the landlord and the property manager, calling them out for their horrible conditions and rent increases. And I watched that rally, and I think you should too. I want the tenants to know that as a landlord and a general human being, I'm really disgusted by what I heard, and you should be too, and do something about it. You know, the vast majority of the tenants are working-class seniors from the Black community, and I am so glad to see them joining together and glad that we have a council member in office who helps ordinary people organize, because that's the only way to get results. You cannot ask nicely, because they continue to ignore and come up, come up with excuses. So if the Democrats on the City Council do not even sign this letter, which is the least they can do, then they, they would be failing to stand with the most vulnerable people in our city. You completely, you continue to say you support Black Lives Matter, but let's show it in action, not word.
Thank you. Okay, let's try Demetris Abu one more time. Star six. There you go. Go ahead.
My name is Demetris Abu. I live in the Columbia Gardens, and we have conditions here that are deplorable to other renters. Our elevator is broke for over a month with disabled people who couldn't go up and down the steps. Our rent increase is impossible for us to meet. Bedbugs, roaches, for the five years that I have been here. And I, the last plumbing, they have, I used to be a pipe fitter. We have four-inch pipe when you should have six for our bathrooms. I was without a bathroom for a long period of time. I had to use other apartments. And I would like for, we would look forward to you empowering New Hope and the Clean Green program, who need your help to support their work in the Black community, and we would like to stand with them and show our support, and we hope that the City Council members.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Cassandra Oaks, followed by Logan Swan, and then Sandra Montes. Cassandra, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Cassandra Oaks, and I stand with Sawant's efforts to stop the rent increases for Rainier Court, their renters are being outpriced, they're low-income people. I also urge the council members to support Sawant's effort to support Clean Greens and New Hope. Clean Greens been around since 2007, serving the low-income community with affordable, healthy, organic, affordable vegetables. And the city needs to step up and support their efforts. They were there during the COVID, giving away vegetables that a lot of times the stores were just closed. So help New Hope and help them with their LEHI with building affordable housing. Help the New Hope Community Development Institute and LEHI to build affordable housing.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Logan Swan, followed by Sandra Montes, and then Robert Jeffrey.
Hi, my name is Logan Swan. Yeah, I'm a union ironworker, journeyman out of Local 86 Seattle, District 2 renter. And yeah, I'm just calling in support of Councilmember Sawant's paid parking for, for construction workers. You know, she brought forward this legislation, and we've had, you know, hundreds of construction workers and, you know, a lot of community support for this, and, you know, I'm just, I think it's outrageous, the amount of pressure that we've had to apply just to be able to get the Council to bring it to a committee. And yeah, I definitely didn't appreciate the email I got from Councilmember Herbold, you know, saying that there's like rules that have to follow, when I saw those same rules get broken to repeal our Amazon tax. And yeah, I just, you know, so I'm urging all the politicians to discuss this legislation and vote to approve this legislation this month, every week, because the...
Thank you for calling in. Next up is Sandra, followed by Robert Jeffrey, and then I am showing that Stanley Stokes is registered but not present. Sandra, go.
Hello?
Hi, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sandra Montes, and I live in the Rainier Court Apartments. We are Black and Brown, low-income seniors facing huge rent increases and horrible conditions. We need the City Councilman to follow Councilmember Sawant's lead and publicly stand with us. We are demanding the rent increases be rescinded and all maintenance issues be addressed. Some of the issues would be like washers not working for months, filthy buildings, safety concerns, gas smell, elevator breakdown. Councilmembers must also support the people's budget demands for New Hope Church reparations and fundraising for Clean Greens to support the Black community in the Central District. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Robert Jeffrey, followed by Breone Scott, and then Addie Smith. And Robert, welcome. Just need to press star six, so we can hear you. There you go.
My name is Robert Jeffrey. I'm pastor of New Hope Baptist Church. The city continues to talk about Black Lives Matter, but all of the time pushing Black and Brown people farther and farther and farther away from the city of Seattle. The Rainier Court Apartments is another indication, another example, of poor retired people now being pushed out by higher rents. This is just getting ridiculous. I mean, we're talking out of both sides of our mouth here. Also, I want to ask you to keep your word and support the New Hope project that you voted unanimously to support, as well as to support the... voted unanimously to support as well as to support the partnership between New Hope and the housing LEHI to get down payment to buy a building. I'm asking you to support our increased efforts, continued efforts to help low-income people and to bring black and brown people back into the city. Please, if you believe Black Lives Matter, put your action.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Breone Scott followed by Addie Smith and then Mary Cole.
Hi, my name is Breone Scott. I'm the director of Clean Greens Farm and Market and I'm coming, standing in solidarity with Sawant's office and my black and brown community. We always talk about Black Lives Matter and we talk about being helping hands, but I am not seeing that in my city right now where we have low-income elderly being pushed out of their units because of higher rent and unlivable conditions. I'm also asking that the councils own up and give out the reparations to New Hope Baptist Church and support Clean Greens on the people's budget. We are all out here trying to do the work. We're not just speaking about it. We're out here trying to do the work and if you guys are about Black Lives Matter, you will help support us and help us stand with our community and bring in black and black, black and brown families back into the city. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Addie Smith followed by Mary Cole. And then Nina Wertz is registered but not present, so we will move to Ebony Wood. Next up, Addie Smith, welcome.
Hi, my name is Addie Smith. I'm a hate crime survivor from right here in Washington State. Governor Inslee's refusal to extend the addiction moratorium is an assault on the BIPOC community that helped elect him to office. Black people across this state have been and are being evicted. They're getting locked out of their apartment. King County Executive Dow Constantine stated recently that at least 15,000 South King County residents have not been helped yet by the stupid bridge moratorium. That ended yesterday. This doesn't include new applicants. This doesn't include people who have yet to apply because they're being told to call back. These numbers do not include all of King County or Washington State, but the Democrats are out here begging for us to keep them in office, to vote for their friends and other establishment Democrats. They think throwing us a bucket with a hole in it is better than nothing from the Republicans. Why did Democrats end the addiction moratorium and refuse to extend PUA? There is no reason. I won't forget in this election cycle or any future election cycles to come. I'm a 35-year registered.
Thank you, Addie, for calling in. Next up is, now it looks like Mary Cole is not present, but Nina Wertz is with us. So we will hear from Nina Wertz and then Ebony Wood and then Arthur Esparza. Nina, welcome. And Nina, make sure you press star six on your end so we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
You can. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Nina Wertz. I'm a carpenter out of local 30. After weeks of fighting against the labor movement, the Democrats have finally listened to us and put legislation that will make the buses fully pay parking for construction workers back on the schedule. How disgraceful it is that representatives of a supposed pro-labor party refused to second a motion supporting us two weeks ago. You stood by our corrupt union leaders as they sabotaged our strike. While those same leaders have now lost their jobs, as their true nature has been exposed as the cheaters they are. No more delay. Every day, workers lose $30 or more just to be able to go to work. You must pass Councilmember Shama Sawant's legislation to make construction buses fully pay for parking. You have a choice to make. Stand by the workers, the people you say you support, or turn your backs on us as the union leaders did.
Next up is Ebony Wood followed by Arthur Esparza and then Annie Weiss-Moore. Ebony, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ebony Wood. I'm here in support of Clean Greens. Clean Greens is a nonprofit-based organization in the heart of the central district that provides fresh, organic produce to the area that allows low-income families who are already facing cost of living increases to access fresh, organic produce. They go out to the local farms and they bring back produce to the vulnerable population that if not maybe for Clean Greens wouldn't have access to. The entire community is involved. Clean Greens is receiving more requests now for produce than they were, that they're able to provide for and want to continue to provide and support like they have been doing throughout this time, especially during the pandemic. I'm here in support of adding additional funding to Clean Greens so that they can continue, thank you.
Thank you for calling in, Ebony. Next up is Arthur Esparza followed by Annie Weiss-Moore and then Denise Bazemore. Arthur, welcome. Arthur, you'll need to press star six. There you go. We can hear you.
Yeah, I'm Arthur. I'm the chair of the Peter J. McGuire Group. We're the largest caucus of carpenters in the Pacific Northwest. First, I want to say the Democrat allies in the carpenters' union have all resigned for corruption, the same ones that tried to strong-arm city council and is saying that we don't need paid parking. I'm glad that you're getting paid parking on the table with Sawant's bill. I want you to get it on immediately and I want you to start talking about it immediately and we expect you to get this done immediately. I think that you want to have your legacy be not one that is in alliance with corrupt union leaders that stuffed our ballot and rigged our elections. Thank you.
Next is Annie followed by Denise Bazemore and then Joyce Davis.
Hi, my name is Annie Weiss-Moore and I live in Columbia Gardens, a senior retirement community at Rainier Court. We are seniors and most of us are on a fixed income. Affordable housing is a great idea, but we need to build more quality affordable housing. The problems we are having stem from buildings that look great from the outside but are cheaply made inside. Then on top of that, Speed and Co. have the nerve to increase our rent without addressing a lot of our maintenance issues that you've been hearing. So we demand that city councils sign on to the letter that Councilwoman Swant sent to Speed and Co. We ask that city councils stand with the tenants here at Rainier Court. We also demand that city councils fund New Hope's affordable housing projects, hopefully built with quality and that for $200,000 to clean.
Next up is Denise Bazemore. Go ahead, Denise.
Hi, my name is Denise Bazemore and I live in the Rainier Court Apartments. We are black and brown, low-income seniors facing rent increases and deplorable living conditions. We need Seattle City Council members to follow Councilmember Sawant, lead and publicly stand with us. We are demanding the rent increases be reclined, rescinded, and all maintenance issues be addressed. We have had our building, I live in the Columbia Gardens building, and it has been flooded eight different times or different areas of the apartment building and one lady has had her apartment flooded three times alone. And they will not bring in dehumidifiers to dry up the water to keep us from getting sick from the mold that can grow.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Joyce Davis.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. The choice is yours. Yes, this is Joyce Davis. Oh, this is Joyce Davis. I live at the, I did the quarter apartment. I've been living here for about 13 years, maybe longer than 13 years. And the place that went down, we have no bathrooms, a mess, and they're raising about rent. They don't do nothing to fix the building up. All they wanted is rent. And I'd like them to come and speak to us and let us know what's going on and I just wish we can do something about this because this is really getting out of hand. And then to give us this notice about our rent going up, but they didn't get, they didn't, they put it through our window. They didn't come to us and have a meeting and nothing. It's really bad. The manager's not good here. We need to get rid of these managers here. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. Next up is Michelle Leclutch. Go ahead, Michelle. Michelle, you'll need to press star six. Star six, Michelle, one more time. Well, Michelle is, there we go.
Michelle Leclutch, I've lived at Rainier Court Apartments, Spokane Apartments. They're brand-new basically. They've only been there two years and from the day I moved in, there was already water leaking in the shower from the mold and it's coming down the sides and they've never tried to fix it in two years. My heater went out eight months ago. I've been really cold, cold, cold for the last two weeks. I had to go buy a small space heater and that barely heats my bedroom. Out of 600 apartments in our four buildings at Rainier Court, there is probably 250 people that have lights out in their apartment. None have, are in the kitchen. They're using the dining room lights to cook and everything. The managers are never in the office half the time and we have no one to complain to. I just want to stand with the low-income people and get us.
Thank you for calling in today. Before I read the name of our last speaker who's both registered and present, there are two other speakers who are registered but not present. That's Jim Wilson and Alvin Sandoval. So we will move to Mary Cole, who is now present. Mary, welcome.
Hi, thank you for that. My name's Mary Cole, 807-80-3-I. I want everyone to review this case, 807-80-3-I. It's in the Court of Appeals Division 1. If you think the judges in this state have stopped being racist and supporting systemic racism and corporate landlords, you're sadly mistaken. I'm also livid that Governor Inslee has ended the eviction moratorium and I'm furious that King County council members have refused to keep all King County residents safe with an eviction moratorium. What black people need to realize is that our vote is our voice. If we need to withhold our vote in elections and give Democrats the House and Senate to make a point, we need to do it. Democrats don't think they need us. They think we need them. This is false. We dealt with worse situations from Republicans. We shouldn't be electing Democrats to deal with even worse situations. Our votes aren't responsible. It seems to me that I've.
Thank you for calling in today. I don't have any other speakers who are both registered and showing up as present. Just double-checking with our IT staff that we don't have anyone in the waiting room waiting to be matched.
There are no further public comment registrants.
Thank you so much, IT. We will go ahead and move to other items of business. We're now closing out the period of public comment and moving to other items of business on our agenda. Next up is payment of the bills. Colleagues, this afternoon, we will have two bills to approve in order to pay the bills for the weeks of October 11th and 18th. I'll ask the clerk to read both bills into the record, but we will take a standalone roll call on each of the two bills. So payment of the bills. Will the clerk please read the titles?
Payment of bills, Council Bill 120208 and Council Bill 120209, An Ordinance Appropriating Money to Pay Certain Audited Claims for the Week of October 11th through October 15th, 2021, and An Ordinance Appropriating Money to Pay Certain Audited Claims for the Week of October 18th, 2021 through October 22nd, 2021, and ordering the payments thereof.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to pass Council Bill 120208. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that the bill passed. Are there any comments? Hearing no comments, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? I move to pass Council Bill 120209. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the bill passed. Are there any comments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read items one through five into the record?
Agenda items one through five, appointments 02055 through 02059. The appointments of Evan Hunley and Kelly McCaffrey as members, Board of Parks and Recreation Commissioners for terms to March 31st, 2022, and the appointments of Jessica A. Farmer, Deepa Savajan, and Marlon Dylan Herrera as members, Boards of Parks and Recreation Commissioners for terms to March 31st, 2024.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Councilmembers, all five items have been read into the record, but we are going to consider items one through four first. And the reason we're doing that is consistent with what Councilmember Juarez shared with us this morning during council briefing is that she has an amendment for the fifth item. So again, we will take up item one through four first and then we will consider item five as a standalone to allow Councilmember Juarez to make her amendment. So consistent with that, I move to confirm appointments 2057 and 2058 and appointments 2055 and 2059. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to confirm the appointments. I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember Juarez, who's the sponsor of these amendments, to walk us through these items.
Thank you, Council President. As I shared this morning in our June 2021 Metropolitan Park District meeting, we approved legislation, again, combining the Board of Park Commissioners and the Park District Oversight Committee into what is now called the Board of Parks and Recreation Commission. The intent was to streamline efforts originally duplicated in these advisory entities. These remaining appointments are a technical shift to update the appointment packets to show the new advisory commission. My understanding is that we will vote on items one to four and will consider five separately. At this time, I recommend council confirm all five, all four reappointments.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Juarez. Are there any additional comments on the first four appointments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the appointments?
Morales?
Yes.
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries and the appointments are confirmed. I move to confirm appointment 2056. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the appointment. I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember Juarez to make her motion.
Thank you. I move to amend appointment 2056 of Marlon Dylan Herrera by substituting version two for version one of the appointment packet. Is there a second?
I will second that. It's been, you're welcome. It's been moved and seconded to amend the appointment by substituting the appointment packet for version two. I'm going to hand it back over to Councilmember Juarez to address this item.
Thank you, Council President. Agenda number five, appointment 2056, requires a substitute today to account for a technical issue, as I stated previously, due to our vote to combine the Board of Park Commissioners and the Park District Oversight Committee into what is now called the Board of Parks and Recreation Commission. We must update the appointment packets to show the new advisory commission. I recommend council confirming appointment 2056.
Thank you, Councilmember Juarez. Are there any additional comments on the substitute? And again, we're just voting on the substitute right now. Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the substitute?
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Great, thank you so much. The motion carries and the appointment is amended. Are there any further comments on the amended appointment? Hearing none. Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the amended appointment?
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries, and the amended appointment is confirmed. Other business, as I mentioned this morning, I will be absent from both council briefing and the city council meeting on November eighth, twenty twenty-one. So if there is no objection, I will be excused from the November eighth, twenty twenty-one city council meeting. Hearing no objection, I am excused from the November eighth city council meeting. Colleagues, I also want to notify you that I will be absent and unavailable for council business from Tuesday, November second through Tuesday, November ninth, twenty twenty-one. Additionally, consistent with the protocols related to the line of succession, I will be issuing a notice of absence to the council and the mayor's office noting that from Friday, November fifth, twenty twenty-one, starting at twelve o'clock PM noon, and through Tuesday, November ninth, twenty twenty-one, ending at six PM, I will be outside of the city of Seattle. As a result, Councilmember Strauss will serve as Council President pro tem from November fifth through November ninth. And my thanks once again go to Councilmember Strauss for serving as Council President pro tem during my absence. Are there any additional, excuse me, is there any further business to come before the council? Councilmember Mosqueta, please.
Thank you very much, Council President. And I just wanted to note for the record for Councilmember Herbald, the note of appreciation, I am sorry I missed the opportunity to sign on to the Family Caregiver Support Month proclamation. And I know that that has already been issued due to the time constraints, but just wanted to say thank you for issuing that. Apologies, I didn't get a chance to say so this morning. And thank you to all of our caregivers as well. Look forward to supporting the month's worth of activities and events to come, and thanks for bringing that forward. Sorry to miss this morning.
Thank you. Thank you for the note, Councilmember Mosqueta. Are there any other items of business to come before the council, before we adjourn? Right, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Colleagues, this does conclude the items of business in today's, excuse me, on today's agenda. Our next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council is scheduled for, excuse me, November eighth, twenty twenty-one, at two o'clock PM. I hope that you all have a wonderful afternoon and evening. We are adjourned. Thanks so much.